...o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. In accordance with the requirements of open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access Channel. I'd like to apologize for the time change in our meeting. We are accommodating the Charter Review Committee's meeting at 7:30. We had a conflict. Two of us sit on that committee as well, so we have a conflict. Just gonna go over the protocol that we've been using since the fall with the 10-minute public comment in the beginning of the meeting to be agenda items, and then 10 minutes at the end of the meeting can be any topic for discussion. So I will, when you want to come up for public comment, just come, state your name and address, and then make your comments.
I believe each comment time is limited to three minutes per person, with a total of 10?
Total of 10.
Okay, correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Three minutes per person, a total of 10 minutes. So, public comment is open.
My name is Joseph Rager and I live at 108 Sunny Hill Road. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Joseph Rager, as I said, and I graduated from Lunenburg two years ago, and I've benefited greatly from the Foreign Language Program that we have. During my time, I started Spanish in eighth grade, or Latin in eighth grade, sorry, and then in ninth grade I added Spanish. I went on to do AP in both of those courses, and I received a four on the AP Latin exam and a five on the AP Spanish exam. And I want to talk to you a little bit about what the Foreign Language Program has done for me. So during my college admissions process, Lunenburg's Foreign Language Program helped me differentiate myself from other applicants. Since that time, I've used many of the skills I learned from Mrs. Kimball's Latin class, Mrs. York's Latin class, Mrs. Radford's Spanish class, Mrs. Proctor's Spanish class, and Mrs. Cormier's French class, which I took as an independent study after school. I did not have the opportunity to learn from Mrs. Beardmore and Mrs. Pugnalis, but both made me feel very comfortable in reaching out to them, and I would often discuss Uruguayan culture with Mrs. Pugnalis and talked with Mrs. Beardmore because they shared a room together. Oddly enough, Mrs. Beardmore and I actually have the same shopping schedule, and so whenever I'm home, I actually see her in Hannaford. It's quite a sight to see because we both scream and then run up and give each other a hug, and so it's quite a time, and it's something that I look forward to every time I come home. And I consider every person within the department a mentor and friend, and it does not matter whether I've been lucky enough to take a class with them or not. They're pillars within our community, and Lunenburg will be a sad place without them. And now I'm sure you're thinking, "That's great. There are so many teachers that students feel comfortable approaching," but there are other teachers that students also find these qualities in. And so I'd like to also talk to you about the more concrete opportunities that Foreign Language has provided for me. Next spring, I'll be studying in not France, where I'll be studying about the slave trade and the city's role in that. My study of French will give me huge access to data that I would never have been able to access before, and this summer I'll actually be working at a financial firm in Chile, and the internship will be conducted in Spanish. Last summer, I lived in France for three months and worked as a mail nanny. I stayed with the kindest family and babysat a seven-year-old boy named Sasha. I lived at their château, which is the French word for castle. When Sasha and I weren't playing in the château or in their vineyards, we were at their beach house. One day in late July, Stephanie had just come home from doing errands. She grabbed the mail and said, "Oh, Michelle, we just got an offer on the house for nine million euro," and then Michelle laughed. Nine million euro is just over $10 million, and the reason they laughed was because the house was evaluated entirely under what it was worth. I woke up every morning and ate a fresh chocolate pastry, and that summer I lived a fantasy life. At the end of the summer, I cried because I had to leave Sasha, whom I had become very close to, and the family asked if I would come back and visit or work for them next summer if money was an issue, and I told them that I probably wouldn't be able to. We're still in touch, though, and since then Sasha has started to learn judo and actually has a bug collection. I did all of this in French because the family didn't know a single word of English before I got there, and I would not have been able to have this dream summer without Mrs. Beardmore or Mrs. Cormier. Mrs. Kimball sparked interest in my foreign language, Mrs. Radford took me under her wing, and the entire Foreign Language Department fostered me. This January, I went to Cusco, Peru with my mother and worked in medical clinics, where I translated for American doctors and students. I worked with patients who had never seen doctors before. I saw intense poverty, made strong friendships, and helped improve people's lives. This January before I spent, the January before that, I spent it in Nicaragua doing the same work. I met a 16-year-old girl on my first day there. She was seven months pregnant, she had one kidney, and she had congenital heart defects. Needless to say, I acted as her translator, and she now has a 13-month-old baby. And by acting as a translator, we were able to treat her and get her the care that she needed. I could tell you endless more stories, and while these may seem like extreme examples, there are hundreds of smaller stories that I could also offer you. Most students who pass through the Foreign Language Program don't have the same experiences that I do, but you'll hear later tonight, I hope, just how important these unique experiences are. About one in five people in the United States speak Spanish. French and Spanish are two of the recognized languages by the United Nations, and knowing Latin helps students who go on to be lawyers and doctors. Speaking a foreign language earns you more money. It makes you more profitable. Speaking a foreign language delays the onset of mental degenerative diseases by two years. And finally, foreign language teaches you how to connect. Like I said, my name is Joseph Rager, and I study at Harvard University, which is arguably one of the best universities in the world. This semester, I paid $425 to attend, and the reason that I was able to do that was because of Lunenburg's Foreign Language Program. I was not the top of my class at high school. I worked hard but was not the hardest working. I achieved but was by no means special. I got three Bs my freshman year, a B my sophomore year, another B my junior year. Needless to say, history was not my strong suit. The thing that separated me from 40,000 other applicants was the way I expressed my passions and ultimately why I was admitted to Harvard was Lunenburg's Foreign Language Department. In the words of my high school history teacher and town resident, the same one who gave me many, many Bs, Mrs. Anna Keegan, "Growing pains are real, they are to be expected, and our town management and residents may experience some discomfort in trying to adjust and tolerate them." That being said, they will not go away. The budget will always be an issue, some years easier to resolve than others, but to eliminate programs quickly and without looking at long-term implications and economic externalities is going to harm more than just those teachers losing jobs. It will have a ripple effect on the value of the town's properties overall. Drastic cuts never work; patience and creative solutions can. I ask you, why have we targeted the Foreign Language Department? How many people in here do not speak English as their first language?
Okay, well, so, we've got three minutes.
Okay, I'll just finish up really quick. Lunenburg is a homogeneous community. We're all white. We all speak English. None of us have struggled to communicate, and it really shows. I ask, what are the ramifications of cutting Foreign Language? It teaches our students, our children, that we do not value culture that is different from our own. We do not value critical thinking, and we do not care about their success. Colleges do not care about our budget. They do not care about the problems that our schools face. They care about the quality of the students that they receive. Small programs like the Foreign Language Department seem easy to cut, but the long-term consequences on their students' ability to get into college, to pay for college, and their ability to perform will be evident. In closing, thank you very much, and I hope you consider keeping the Foreign Language Department in its entirety.
Thank you.
Peggy Proctor, Department Head currently at Lunenburg, and I want to first begin by thanking administration at the high school, middle school, and superintendent's office for their support. I also want to say that there's been some miscommunications and some misleading information. Our intent, and I think we try to do it by press releases in the ledger about things that are going on in the high school for foreign languages, because we really, I don't have anything prepared, so cut me off when it's time, okay? We try to keep the public informed about how important studying other languages is, and I think it's easy to become, you know, English, obviously, the whole world studies English. So I want to apologize. I had asked a few former students who took AP Spanish to gather a few comments from a French student, a Latin student, and Spanish students, and it kind of took on this tsunami wave, and I do apologize for that, but I also have to tell you that I'm pretty impressed with the fact that these freshmen, some of them are freshmen in colleges, who took the time to kind of make all that happen. So I again apologize, but I think it's important, and I think it's important we advocate at a community level and a state level how important all languages are. So I thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight and for your support.
You have any other public comments?
He's got like a minute.
We have one minute left in public comment.
Well, I'm gonna shock you all and be brief. Mike Mackin, 26 Cortland Circle, Lunenburg. I'm here tonight to listen as much as I am to speak, so that's, one minute's fine with me. I'm here to voice my support for the entire committee in struggling with the budget issues. I'm former member of this committee, former member of the FinCom. We faced times before. What I find unusual is that we faced those times during times of deep recession. We faced those times in, times where there were deep cuts to local aid, to towns, and to Chapter 70. I do not believe that we're facing those times now. I'm in favor of maintaining at least a level service budget, and I will provide any support I can to that end. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yep.
Oh, we have less than a minute.
Less than a minute?
Yep. Less than a minute.
That's good, because my statement is very brief. I just want to let you know my name, Mary Ann Mascari. I'm at 54 Chestnut Street in Lunenburg. I've not always lived here. My kids did go to school out of state. They were able to go through Spanish for not only their high school years. My daughter, who's now a junior in college, has her Spanish minor already. By going to Dominican Republic to visit orphanages, to have those credits under her belt, she was able to not only learn the Spanish language so that she can become part of her world, she's also interested in going into international law and human rights. And when we can invest in anything, mutual funds and all that, why wouldn't we invest in our kids? They're our best resource for benefiting all of us. I advocate for them.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of the first public comment. So we have warrants and line item transfers?
Yes, we do.
To approve? So we'll just, what's your line item transfer?
So in addition to warrants, this evening we have one line item transfer, a request from Lunenburg Primary School to transfer for $458.86 from the office supply account to the general school supplies account. This additional money in this line would allow us to purchase construction paper, dry erase markers, flashcards, pencils, rulers, et cetera, et cetera. And I would recommend that we approve.
I need a motion?
Motion to approve line item transfer as outlined by Dr. Burnham.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye? Aye. So we'll just pass those around for signature. We have minutes on the table to approve February 6 regular session, February 6 executive session, February 25 special meeting session. Have you reviewed those minutes and made comments? I know that, yeah, Ms. Weiss did. Have you all taken a look at those? And they have been addressed, the comments from Mrs. Weiss?
Yes, I checked.
Correct? Okay. So I just need a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the February 6 regular session minutes, the February 6 executive session minutes, and the February 25 special meeting session minutes of 2019.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And now it's the superintendent's report.
It will be brief, so I have an update relative to the primary school principal search. Interviews were conducted last week on February 26 and 7. Finalists were named, and we are currently hosting site visits this week. We held our first today. There will be another tomorrow, and the final candidate will be in on Friday. The finalist site visit schedule, along with candidate bios, is posted on the primary school website. We have an update on our FY '20 budget. We will be addressing that in more detail shortly, but I wanted to make sure that everybody is aware that at this point we have provided an update to staff in all the schools yesterday during the faculty meeting time. We did speak with any staff members who may potentially be impacted by any of the recommended cuts that we'll discuss tonight. We are also aware that there are students who are upset, understandably so, by the proposed cuts, and we are also aware that there's some misinformation, as Ms. Proctor referenced. So tomorrow, Mr. McGrath and I will be holding an assembly for the students so that we can address questions, concerns, and provide some explanation and background so that we make sure that we clear up any misconceptions about the budget process and the actual proposal. And lastly, last meeting, I referenced the Break Free From Depression curriculum. It's a curriculum designed by Boston Children's Hospital that focuses on increasing awareness about adolescent depression. We said that we were going to, at the recommendation of the Behavioral Health Advisory Council, pilot this curriculum with the eighth grade this year. Last evening, there was a parent information session that was held. In addition, we will also be sending out the presentation slides to all parents via email so that if they weren't able to attend the session, they still have that information. And that is all I have for this evening.
Can you just tell us what time the principal finalist forums are for parents?
Yes, there's one at 2:30 each afternoon, 2:30 to 3 o'clock, and then there's another that begins at 5:15 until 5:45 in the evening.
At the primary school cafeteria?
At the primary school cafeteria.
Okay. Okay. So new business is, oh, student rep?
Eliza.
Hi. So I have no news from the primary school, Turkey Hill Elementary School. Spring activities start in the third week of March. They will be offering strategy games, volleyball, kickball, board games, yoga, 3D sculpture, and crafts. On March 16, the PTO is hosting a skating party for middle schoolers from 5:30 to 7:30. That will be $10 per person. I have no news from the middle school. And then news from the high school. The juniors won the competitive class plays a few weeks back. All three performances were really awesome and ran smoothly both nights. Winter sports have wrapped up, all but hockey, who just won the district semifinals last night. They play again Sunday at 4 against Northbridge, and that will be held at the Civic Center. Spring sports start Monday the 18th. We will be offering softball, baseball, boys and girls lacrosse, track and field, and tennis. Auditions for the musical Annie Junior took place last week. The show will include both students from the middle and high school. And then lastly, seven members of our student council are at the MASC conference right now in Cape Cod. The council always benefits from this opportunity, and we can't wait for the members to return and share all their great ideas. That is it.
Thank you. So now the FLAC update.
So as you know, I serve as your representative to the FLAC Collaborative and periodically provide you updates. At this point, last time I had mentioned that the FLAC Collaborative was looking for a new location to house the Caldwell Alternative Middle High School program. They had expressed some serious interest in a property located on 2A in Fitchburg. Unfortunately, they will not be able to move forward with acquiring that property as, dealing with a municipal acquisition, it has a little bit more complexity to it, so the owners are seeking other potential buyers.
Disappointing. Okay. Stop with that.
That's it.
Okay. Old business, school choice update.
So at this point this evening, based on our enrollment numbers and the transition that we typically see, student transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, students moving on to Monty Tech as an example, or other high schools, we continue to believe that we can accommodate 20 freshmen, school choice seats. Additionally, we believe that we will be able to accommodate between 10 and 15 sophomores at this time. After some analysis, we would not recommend additional students for the junior class next year. And in accordance with the discussion that we had at the last meeting, we were all in agreement that we would not look at opening seats for seniors for next year. That said, I am requesting that you consider deferring a vote until after we present to the finance committee and we have a more definitive figure for our budget, and then we will know how many cuts we need to make and what those cuts will be. Once we know for certain what those cuts are looking like, I can have a more definitive number for you, particularly for the sophomore class for next year.
And would that deferment, hello? No, it's very loud. Would that deferment still allow enough time for application and all that?
So that would be the first meeting in April?
We could certainly defer until the first meeting in April, yes.
Or did you want to do it the second meeting in March?
We potentially could do the second meeting in March.
Why don't we do the second meeting in March? That way it gives people more time. Who want a choice?
Mm-hmm.
And now, the budget update.
So I would invite Mr. Cassidy up to the table. Additionally, we have members of the leadership team here this evening should you have any specific questions relative to impact at a particular building. So at this point, we really want to focus the conversation around the gap between the budget that was recommended back in December and our recommended guideline from the town manager's office of a 2.5% increase to the budget. When we take a look at that, numbers now having been adjusted for several factors, and we can discuss those factors in a moment, what we're looking at is a gap of $334,118. So that said, our charge really is to come back to you and make our best recommendations as to how we are going to close that gap, should we actually have to accept that 2.5% I'll say that this is not a task that is pleasant, but we did the best job that we could, and I'd like to outline for you some of the guiding principles for the work of the leadership team in making decisions about the cuts. We wanted to be sure that we could provide a quality, free public education, right? So we weren't looking to recommend additional fees at this time. We wanted to be able to preserve student access to a well-rounded educational program. We wanted to be able to allocate resources to meet student needs. We want to ensure that we can maintain a lower class size, particularly at the primary level and the elementary level. We wanted to be sure that we were making cuts that would inflict the least negative impact to students. And we want to allocate resources in alignment with the district's strategic plan goals and the school committee goal to allocate resources for the greatest impact on teaching and learning. So that's the framework for the discussions that the leadership team had as we wrestled with how to make these cuts. There's not a single recommended reduction here tonight that isn't going to have some sort of impact. But again, we looked to do our very best to have the least negative impact on students. So that said, what are among the recommendations? Looking district-wide, we are looking to level fund our supply accounts, which essentially, with rising costs annually, shipping costs going up, et cetera, a level-funded supply account essentially is a bit of a reduction. We are also going to examine our paraprofessional schedules, and we're going to look to make some slight reduction of hours, not wholesale across the board for all para positions, but where we can make an adjustment, total hours in the course of a week, we can recoup a little bit of funding there. But again, it's going to be strategic and dependent upon student need. We're also looking to hold back on posting stipended positions, and those would include the department head position, the building leadership team, and the advisors for clubs. Currently, we have many more clubs and advisors than we can self-fund through student activity We can talk a little bit about the impact to not having department heads. That would actually allow us to have those folks in those roles teach an additional class period. So that's more sections of offerings for students, and that is in an attempt to maintain a class size that is what we would consider optimal. Taking a look at the primary school, as you know, the enrollment numbers are increasing at the primary, and in the fall I came to you indicating that we were seeing an increase in a particular profile of student need around behavioral, social, emotional supports. Those are driving factors in the decision-making. The recommendation for a cut at the primary school would be a halftime, a .5 FTE librarian position. The impact there, essentially, there would be no library special in the rotation at the primary school. This would reduce prep periods for the teachers from 6 to 5. Teachers will be asked to bring students to the library as part of their instructional time, and we will also look to find some parent volunteers that can help with the library maintenance and support for those classroom visits. That's the only cut that we're looking at at the primary school. Turkey Hill Elementary School, we're looking to eliminate a part-time secretary position. Currently, this position is not filled, so it's not, you know, laying off a staff member. We would just remove this particular position from the budget. At the middle school, there is a teacher position, a full-time teaching position, that would have accompanied a large bubble class coming up from Turkey Hill. We're proposing that the impact is that a grade seven teacher will be switched to grade six to accommodate the larger class size, which we're anticipating with current enrollment to be 138 students. This will make six grade six teachers. The past several years, we've had six to 10 new sixth graders register over the summer. So we need to anticipate that we might see an increased enrollment. Grade seven will function with five full-time teachers. Student enrollment is currently 131, and that would make class sizes approximately 26 per class, and there would be one class with 27. I'm going to say that this particular position is much like the position that I described earlier in the budget process, the seventh kindergarten class, and that would be dependent upon enrollment. If we see a spike in enrollment at the middle school, I will be back to you telling you that this is a necessary position. But for now, based on the data that we have, we're saying that this will be cut from the Also, at the middle school, a foreign language teacher, the impact here, this would be an elimination of a program that we've developed over the past two years. past two years in which students are exposed to three languages and different cultures in order to make a more informed decision as to the foreign language that they would select for their grade eight year. This cut comes as a true reduction of service to students. The middle school will run sixth and seventh grade specials and enrichment with one less offering, making those enrichment classes, the class sizes, a bit larger. We've had some conversation about if this indeed comes to pass, we would look to explore options, bringing in artists in residence to be part of the enrichment program. You can have authors in residence. You can have engineers, retired engineers, come in and be sharing their expertise and background. So there are things that we can do to maintain offerings that would not have a budgetary impact, but still provide robust opportunities for the students in terms of enrichment. At the high school, we had proposed a new position of an athletic trainer, we're at this point going to take that position off the table. The way that this will work moving forward is that we will look to contract with athletic trainers in the area. So in other words, if a neighboring district has an athletic trainer, and that athletic trainer is not committed to being at a sports function on a given day, but we have a function, we can contract them at a per diem rate so that we have access to an athletic trainer as much as we possibly can. We're not posting this as a, even as a part-time position. We will do our best to bring in an athletic trainer as often as we can. Obviously, the funding that we would put into that line would have a limit, and when those funds were exhausted, we would not be providing access to an athletic trainer. I will reiterate here that there is conversation across the Commonwealth that if a district has an athletic program, there is conversation that they are approaching mandating that districts have an athletic trainer on staff. That mandate has not come yet, so for now, we're okay, but just know that that could be coming our way. Also, at the high school, a foreign language teacher. Based on enrollment analysis, we will be phasing out French as a program offering at the high school. Students will have two, not three, options for language choices coming in their freshman year. AP foreign language courses would be available through virtual high school. Typically, the AP courses in the foreign language have very few students enrolled, and we would provide priority access for those virtual high school seats to be sure that our students still can take an advanced placement foreign language course. As a result of this reduction, we anticipate that we will have a slight increase in the size of our Spanish and Latin classes and in advisory classes due to the loss of a full-time employee. There's one less staff member who can supervise an advisory class. It's important to note, relative to this particular cut, no student, and we ran the numbers, tried to figure out how many sections we would need to accommodate the students who are currently in a French track. So we're not saying, we're also not offering French four, French five AP. We can accommodate, and we have done some creative programming where we've combined, let's say, a French three and an honors French three, and the teacher differentiates the assignments and the instruction for the kiddos in the class. We would look to continue to do that kind of work, and if necessary, for a French four or five class, if there's a low number of students interested, again, we would look to virtual high school seats so that those students can continue in the track. We're also looking to eliminate a paraprofessional position at the high school. This is not a special education paraprofessional position. This particular position supervises a study hall. The impact here will be to the advisory program. We will not be able to mandate the Thursday 24-minute activity, which is really at the heart of the advisory program. Essentially, staff will supervise students in study halls. This will also have an impact to teacher planning and making connections with students, and that really is at the heart of the purpose of an advisory. And lastly, at the high school, we would be eliminating the greenhouse manager. The greenhouse manager does conduct small group activities in the greenhouse, so with this position eliminated, there would be no more small group activity in the greenhouse. Additionally, other staff and students, as an example, students who are participating in our summer programs through special education, our ACE students, our ACHIEVE students, could take on some of, you know, the roles of keeping those plants watered. Administrators will also be pitching in over the summer to maintain that greenhouse because it is an extraordinary benefit to our students and our program offering at the high school. Questions?
Can you just go over the numbers for the French program, just to enlighten the group here as to why that is being phased out?
Yeah, so when we take a look at the current numbers, and I might invite the administration from the high school up to the table as well, when you take a look at numbers, you see seven students enrolled, 11 students enrolled. Based on those low numbers, again, it makes sense where the numbers overall for French are lower than the numbers of enrolled students in our Latin program and our Spanish program. If we've got to make a cut and have minimal impact to students, this was an area. So, no, again, we are not eliminating French. We're going to phase it out. We don't want any students currently in the French program to be negatively impacted. We're committed to making sure that we can continue to provide French courses to take them through their full pathway if they choose to continue. Obviously, we see numbers of enrolled in languages beyond, honestly, beyond a second year language or a third year language because they've met their graduation requirement and they've met requirements for college admission. So the numbers for any language, Spanish four, five, you're going to see some decrease in enrollment in those advanced courses in any of the languages. But again, the overall numbers of students enrolled, and I believe it's fewer than 50 total enrolled in our French program...
It's 33. It's 33 students in the French program.
That is grades currently at the high school, and then you would have to add the projections in from the eighth grade coming up. I believe there are 23...
In French?
In French, some of those were their second and third choice, so trying to project that out. So I would comfortably be able to say probably about 50 students, give or take, without hammering me down to that number, but that would be around that number without having all of the projections and the students going through the selection process. But I would be comfortable to say around 50 is pretty much...
So essentially, if we are not offering French one, our incoming ninth grade next year would have to choose between Latin and Spanish. But typically, even the number of students that you would see in a section for eighth grade, not all of them would pursue by choice...
French.
French.
There is no one enrolled currently in French one.
Correct. Correct. Again, there will be no negative impact to students. Kiddos who are taking French will continue to take French, and students coming into the high school will still have a choice between two language offerings. As part of a big-picture discussion, and we'll talk more about this as, you know, we move into my report of entry findings and plans beyond, had a conversation today with the Department Chair for Foreign Language, you know, and maybe it's time to assess what other languages might be of more interest to our students other than French. It's possible that there is another third language offering that we could offer here in Lunenburg that might draw students in a way that they're more evenly dispersed amongst the three offerings. Right now, we just don't have that.
Any other questions that I can help you with? This was a very difficult thing to do.
Right.
I know the supply item stayed the same. Were there any other considerations other than staffing changes?
This budget is so lean operationally, every other line item in the budget, we cannot possibly recoup $334,000 any other way than through staff cuts. Not putting the stipends out for post, essentially, if you cobble together those stipends and the greenhouse manager position and the little bit of savings that we can cut in terms of district-wide accounts, essentially, we're talking another staff member. If we did not cobble that money together, we would have been talking about another FTE cut. This budget, it's very lean. It's very lean.
I had one other question. The work that's currently done by department heads, should you have to eliminate department heads, how do we anticipate that would be done?
That's going to put more work on administration. If we don't get leadership teams, it's going to be very difficult around the scheduling process. I lean heavily on my department heads for the scheduling process and getting all the sections together. I lean very heavily on my department heads around budget time. It would count, it would triple my hours on what I would be talking to the different departments. They know what they need in their departments, so that would be an increased workload on myself.
The model that we're exploring is essentially still allowing for a leadership team stipend at the high school. It's different from the roles and responsibilities attached to a department head stipend. So the functions of a department head stipend as defined, many of those would go unfilled. We looked at how building leadership teams have functioned in other buildings. Input to the budget process is, has been standard practice in all of the other buildings. So to maintain a leadership team with a stipend at the high school, Mr. McGrath would still have the support of people in every department advising him as to the budget development. It's a savings overall in the stipend, but it still provides some support to the administration and representation from each of the departments as well.
I'm wondering if you can articulate what some of the driving factors are in the increased request, the 4% for the budget, what we had originally said was...
So essentially, that 4.2% replaces the 5.9%. So when I proposed the budget in December, we were working with an 8% increase for the health insurance factored into that budget. So now that we have those knowns and we've made adjustments, and Mr. Cassidy can talk in more detail about that, but we've made the adjustment for what we now know is the final health insurance increase cost, which is actually a decrease, which is phenomenal. We have some information relative to the transportation bid that's been factored in. We are aware, you know, of a retirement or two, so there have been some adjustments made. So essentially, what you see as the current status of the proposed superintendent's budget, it's still the same proposal that I gave to you in December, but now those figures have been adjusted, and in fact, it's no longer a 5.9% increase, it's actually only a 4.2% increase for exactly the same thing.
And the reason I mention that is because we have a much larger audience now than had been at that previous presentation.
It's great to have support.
I think it's important that they understand that some of the driving factors were the contractual obligations as well as the transportation that you mentioned. So these are the driving factors for the 4.2 request.
Correct. So maybe Mr. Cassidy could talk a little bit more about the process that we've gone through over the last four to six weeks, making adjustments as information has been made available to us.
Okay, so I'll probably, I was going to be throwing a lot of numbers at you and a lot of percentages. So just remember, we came in in December, the increase was a 5.9% increase from our current, from FY '19 to FY '20. So the proposed budget was 5.9%. I believe we reported back in February that we estimated that the insurance is going to be 5%. So we brought that down a little bit more, and, but things change very quickly, and because of our insurance, we're talking about a 4.2%. So we went from a 5.9 to a 4.2% increase from the current budget. I just want to reiterate that the 334 that the superintendent of schools is referring to, that does include a reduction of known retirements. So we've taken, we've swapped out those salaries. We've removed the insurance. We've also looked at master teachers, and there was an application process that staff was, went through, and there was a savings there, so we recouped some money.
In other words, we don't have as many applications as we had budgeted for in the first iteration of the budget.
So that 5.9 was approximately $667,000, and now we're down to 334. So that's the insurance, the master teacher cost, and some retirements. So those are the reductions. Some of our increases, excuse me, is a very moderate increase to our transportation. And at the next meeting, we'll be making a recommendation to approve that contract. But that was only a 3.4% increase, which is very, very good for the district, in my opinion. And then we had a small increase of out-of-district costs for our students. That's included in this 334. So we could have brought it down, but some of our costs did go up. These were, these are our unknowns that we kept on talking about at the beginning of the process, so now they're known. And in my opinion, and the superintendent can add to this, I think the other unknown that we're still waiting for is kindergarten enrollment, and we can provide an update on...
Any increased enrollment coming into the middle school as well?
So things are becoming more clear as far as what our costs and our expenses are going to be next year. The guideline budget for the town is two... The guideline budget for the town is 2.5%. We're looking for a 4.2%. And once again, that gap is about $334,000. And all those cuts reflect that. It's kind of a summary. I know, I'm just trying to, trying to make it clear where some of those numbers really came from. Because it, it's, it seems like every meeting, we come in with new numbers and we're not, as things become more clear, we want to share that information with you. And I think it's important to note that these cuts that we're proposing to you tonight are as of March 6, 2019. And, you know, if there's some additional money comes in, we'll be coming back to the committee with some things to get back into the budget. If there are more retirements that we've become aware of, we'll use that money to make adjustments. Those are still, those are, those are some intangibles that we really don't know at Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I think I did. Like I said, I just wanted to make sure that the people who may not have been watching since December understood where these numbers were coming from, from the, in the process that you went through, bringing, basically starting with nothing on the budget and looking at what you need based on student needs and enhancing the student requirements, or what are their experiences on what needs to speed up.
Correct. You might remember that that first iteration of the budget in December, building administrators and department heads made reductions to lines in their budget based on that request. Make sure that you're including in your budget what you need. So that's why I say there isn't a whole lot of money to cut in lines in the budget because they really did scrutinize their budgets and came in with a pretty lean budget in the first round.
And I would just say, you know, I understand it's a difficult decision to be making on possibly getting resources. And I think that you have done a very good job coming up with a plan that doesn't, has the least negative impact to the students. But also that you have worked with the leaders and the teachers to arrive at this potential solution, so.
And I know it doesn't feel like a solution to the people who are in positions that may, and I say may, be eliminated. I'm going to reiterate that. My sense is that there is still a very cooperative feeling between the town, in our conversations with the town manager. She's been attentive and following up. What do these new numbers mean for you and the budget? What's the impact? I don't feel at all as though there's no hope. I think that if we can present a good case, and as I've said to staff, the good news in the numbers for us, that decrease in health insurance benefits the entire town budget, right? So I'm hopeful. I, I'm hopeful that we will receive something higher than a 2.5.
And then you would be returning to us.
We would be coming back to you at the April meeting that we have slated, April 3, the first Wednesday in April, to vote to approve the budget. Whatever outcome we have with the finance committee, we would be coming back. Worst-case scenario, we're probably coming back to you with these same cuts.
Mr. Cassidy?
The superintendent took the words out of my mouth. So the, we will be back in April for a budget for you to approve. That will go to town meeting. The next meeting in March, we'll provide another update on, on any, any information that comes to us, we'll share it at that time. But that first meeting in April is the budget that you'll be voting on that goes to town meeting.
And the meeting with FinCom is not this Thursday, but it is next Thursday?
March 14, 7:00 p.m. in Town Hall.
Town Hall, okay.
And that was one other comment I wanted to make, is that I hope people will continue to watch because budgets are fluid. They change. What things look like in December is not what they look like in April. So I think for, to stay informed, to know what, what is happening, what changes, what may not be happening that looked perhaps not as good in January, could look much more hopeful at that point. So for panic not to take hold, because this happens with budgets every year. I think sometimes when you look around, you see things on social media, there begins to be a panic. But I hope that people will continue to watch as, as everything unfolds. And, you know, this is certainly not any best-case scenario, as is. It may end up being that, but as you said, it may not be. And to, to continue to look here in our forums, on our websites, to reach out if they have continued questions and concerns, so that everybody can have the most accurate and up-to-date information.
Correct. I think it's important to, to be clear, particularly for students who haven't been in the meeting process and looped in for the information along the way. Because as you know, we've held meetings with faculty to provide updates. I've provided updates by email. We've also had open communication with the union leadership. Students haven't been looped into that process all the way along. So it's a little bit like that old-school telephone game where the information transitions and changes just a little bit, so that the message that it started out as is totally morphed into something different by the time it makes the end of the line. I want to be clear, there is no member of the entire leadership team that is coming to you joyfully with these recommendations for cuts, not to our line items, not to positions, right? But we're doing the best we can to inflict the least harm. Again, in service to what's in the best interests of meeting student needs. That's, that's been the commitment of the entire leadership team throughout this process. And it's painful. It's not easy to sit and try to determine how to make these cuts. It's something that weighs heavy on all of us. But, but we did it, I think, with the best intentions for, for our students.
And Wendy, just to add to what you were saying, pack this excellent job of putting these meetings out in the public square. So, stay informed.
Any other auxiliary meetings that do have effect?
Absolutely.
Yeah, FinCom.
FinCom.
Next Thursday, 7 o'clock. Here. Thank you, Dr. Bingham, for that explanation. So now we're on to our second reading of policies 5402 and 5406, which are...
5402 is on the student harassment.
And 5406 is endangering health and safety interrogation, search, and seizure policy. This is the second reading. So I will take the motion to waive the reading.
Did we get any feedback?
We haven't had any public comment, have we? Anybody send you any emails with comments and concerns?
No.
The move that we waive reading for 5402 and 5406, the second reading?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
And now we're to our second public comment. So 10 minutes.
Good evening. I'm Mary Foyle, 985 Flat Hill Road. As many of you know, I wear many hats in this district. I started at LHS as an English teacher in 2002. I became a building rep in 2005. I've served on negotiating teams. In 2010, I moved to Lunenburg, becoming a taxpayer, which definitely had a different impact then. Still not used to living and working in town, too. It's an adjustment. In 2011, I became union president. 2014, I became department chair. I say these roles, not to give my bio, but to show that I've really been invested in the school community. But with that being said, and having all those roles, and really trying hard to make decisions that are best for students, even during negotiations, because any teacher will tell you, you know this, that a teacher's working conditions is a student's learning conditions. So really keeping student needs at the heart. But despite all those roles, the one that has impacted me probably the most recently happened in 2014. And then this September, my kids enrolled in Lunenburg Public Schools. Kindergarten in 2014, and another kindergarten now. I always have pushed my students, and I've always done what I thought, even if my students didn't like it, what was best for my students in the classroom. I'm a staunch advocate of public schools. I work in them. I've been very involved in the union with it as well. It, it breaks my heart and it infuriates me as a parent that, and this has happened for a few years now, but my children don't have full-time art. My children don't have a full-time music position. And we're looking at my kindergartner, who will be a first grader, hopefully, next year. She's a tough one, not having library. And looking at the high school, where we've seen reductions, where we don't have a full-time librarian, and it's tough sharing that position. Looking at the electives that existed in the building when I first started teaching here 17 years ago, comparing to the electives that we have now, I'm growing more and more concerned that we're becoming a core school and not a school that's offering a diverse, well-rounded education. And it absolutely breaks my heart, though my son is in, in fourth grade, so a little bit away from the high school, but I'm fully aware now that this high school may very well not be the high school that he needs. And that really bothers me as a teacher in that high school, to know that we may not have enough offerings, because the writing on the wall is that these budget issues are going to continue. But with that being said, and I have props, because what's a teacher without a prop? The foundation formula budget has not been redone since 1993, when ed reform first came out. And there was a budget review that both parties worked together and said, wow, mass schools are being underfunded, maybe as much by a billion dollars a year. And there is a movement, and I have resolutions with the chair and the superintendent have copies of, but I have copies here tonight if anyone wants any. And I'm encouraging the school committee, and I will be going to Board of Selectmen as well, to sign off on the resolution to say to the state that you need to fix the foundation formula, so that our schools get the money that they deserve. And actually, the money that it could bring to Lunenburg over a three- to five-year period, depending how the formula, if it gets redone and how it goes through, could actually bring Lunenburg $902,381. So as we're having these budget conversations, I think this money is really important to consider. So I have copies of the resolution if you'd like them. If you do sign it at some meeting, I have an even better prop to be used. But I really encourage you to look at it. I really encourage you to talk to town officials. Again, I'll go to Board of Selectmen as well, because funding is a local issue, but it's also state issue, too. And I think we can really work together to pressure our state to give us the schools that we really deserve.
It's on our agenda for our next meeting.
Oh, awesome.
Great. I'll bring a big prop then, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment from the public?
Jackie Rager, I live at 108 Sunny Hill. Some schools have varsity sports count as their gym elective. Have you looked at doing that, so that you could potentially cut an FTE from a gym teacher versus cutting a, a language curriculum?
Can you, can you say that first part again?
Yeah, some schools take a varsity sport and use that as your elective for a gym class. We don't do that. And so we have all of these gym classes and teachers that we have to pay to have this gym class. It would be easier to look at the numbers to potentially cut an FTE from the athletic department and allow varsity sports to be counted as an elective or as a credit. And then, I didn't know if you looked at that. And then the other avenue, as a homeowner, I looked at Lunenburg because of the school system. I can say right now, having only one option for a spoken language as a foreign language, I would not buy in this town. And I think it's gonna have a great ripple effect on the community and the desirability of Lunenburg to only have one foreign language. And I know you say it's not gonna affect-
We have two. We're gonna have two.
Latin is not a foreign, a spoken language.
Oh, okay.
To only offer Spanish as a spoken language is a detriment to children. And, and I can tell you, like, one of the key reasons my son got into the school he got into was speaking three different languages from this high school. And it's gonna be a detriment. I'm just asking you if you can look at other alternatives, like the varsity sports and different things like that.
Thanks.
Hello, Jessica Beardmore. I'm the French teacher at Lunenburg High School. Resident of Lunenburg since 2002. Worked at the high school since 2004. I'm here on behalf of my French students, past and present, some of whom posted some heartfelt testimonials on a Facebook page, which was not started by faculty members, about what French and other languages have meant to them. And I personally can't let the French program, which I've invested countless hours in, which has meant so much to me and actually hundreds of students over the years, be dismantled without voicing my objections to that. I have a long list of facts and figures about the importance of French. I'm under the impression there's only 10 minutes for public comment in total, so I'm gonna skip all of that. I'm going to read you some quotes from students. I'm extremely emotional, so you'll have to bear with me, but I am very passionate as well about what I do. Kelsey Olden, "I stayed in the south of France for nine months and became fluent in the language and was able to meet wonderful people that I now have a lifelong relationship with." Kayla Joadwin, "I planned using, on using French that I learned when I work at an interior design firm in Paris one day. Madame Be, that's my name in the classroom, inspired me to do great things, things that I never would have imagined were possible if I hadn't taken French in high school." Nick Rowley, "This would rob students of an academic and cultural experience. It would be a step away from a program that leaves students more open-minded and culturally aware." Abby Clark, "I had originally requested to study Spanish, but I was asked to switch languages because the classes were full. I hesitantly switched to French, knowing, not knowing how much of an impact studying that class language would have on me. 10 years later, I have a bachelor's degree in French and Francophone Studies, and I am currently pursuing a master's degree in adolescent French education. The thought of this program being downsized or cut is devastating to me." Grace Survey, "By phasing out French, Lunenburg's future will lose more than a class, more than a foreign language. They will lose the chance to see the world in a different light." I am under the impression that someone said there are 34 students enrolled currently in French. That is not correct. There's 45 at the high school, grades nine through 12. There are 23 students currently enrolled in the middle school program in eighth grade, doesn't count six and seven. There is a programmatic decision that is being made based on numbers that are slightly askew, because my French II class, which has seven, should have had about 17 or 18, but because we're such a small school, it conflicted with band. We're both singletons. This happens every single year. And a whole bunch of them went into Latin, which I am currently teaching to them. And many of whom have said absolutely wanted to take French and, and had to choose between two things. And yes, we all have to do that in life. But they very much love French, and we're hoping to come back to it. I think for me personally, the saddest part of this entire phasing out proposal, and that it's being treated like a business, my product French isn't selling, and therefore it has to be discontinued. I look back and I wonder if I did all I could to sell my product. Maybe I did, maybe I didn't. Countless trips to Europe, I think it's probably around seven, seven trips to Quebec, numerous trips to the Boston Museum of Fine Arts, to French restaurants, numerous trips to the Boston Opera House to see the Phantom of the Opera and Les Misérables, which students have no idea about before they- have no idea about before they come to me, both of which are French novels which take place in France and have stories that are incredibly beautiful, and both of which I've been told by former students was a life-changing experience for them. I don't want to pit one language against another. We're all valuable. I've offered opportunities to students that brought the language alive, from La Martinique to France, to Quebec, to Morocco, to Algeria. I think I helped open up their eyes. And despite the low numbers, French has enriched these students' lives, their educational formation, their outlook on the world, in both tangible and intangible ways, both high and low-performing students. So I propose a paradigm shift. We choose to continue the French program. If Spanish classes fail, they choose Latin or French. I hope we can stop treating education like a business and remember that no matter what language they end up in, they're going to reap the benefits of learning about other cultures, the challenges of trying to communicate in another language, the critical thinking that comes with manipulating new words and syntax, the opening up of a world to them, and doors that can open that they didn't even know existed, like my student Abby Clark, who ended up in French by second choice and is now going to be a teacher of French. Very few people know at age 13 what language is going to be most beneficial to them. What's important is that they learn one. Let's please value the long history of French in Lunenburg, the foundations of New England, our French heritage, which inspired me to learn French and countless others in Lunenburg with names like Leblanc, Lafford, Chapdalen, Gervais, Deschens. A famous international businessman once said, "Do you know what language is most useful in business? The language of your client." And at age 13, students have no idea what language that will be. Teaching in Lunenburg has been a dream come true for me. I have had the privilege of teaching beginning French through advanced placement for 15 years. My students have inspired me, and they continue to tonight. I had no plan to come here tonight until I was hearing from them. I hope that you find a way to fund the French program in the future, and that's all. Thank you.
Do the reports, or should we skip them? We have to...
I think in the interest of time.
Executive session, right? In the interest of time, we're just going to go to executive session now, because charter review has to come. So we're, in accordance with MGLC 30A, Section 21, "To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, not to return to regular meeting."